Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 21st, 2025 Minnetonka School Board Study Session. We have two items on the agenda for this evening, well, three, I guess. Time for citizen input. Citizen input is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on any topic in accordance with the guidelines printed below. And I don't think we have anybody wishing to address the board. Good. We will move on to our update on OPEB trust fund. Superintendent Law?
Acting Chair, members of the board and members of the public, OPEB trust fund is other post-employee benefits. Tonight, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Paul Bourgeois, is going to talk through the, what this trust fund is, a little bit of history about it, our current status and some projections for the purpose of informing the board and the public about this fund and how some things have changed over the last six months or 12 months based on some changes in employee behavior, former employee behavior and other statutory change. Mr. Bourgeois?
Thank you, Superintendent Law. Mr. Chair, members of the board, actually, I look back and the last time I did a board presentation on this was a couple of years ago. So it's appropriate to just check in on everything. The fund is doing fine, it's doing what it's intended to do, but it's probably worth a little bit of a refresher. So, a little bit of a history and a purpose on it. Back in 2008, the legislature passed Minnesota Statute 41.675, and that was something that allowed public entities, including school districts, to basically start a trust fund for other post-employment benefits. The, and so, OPEB for short. The OPEB liabilities were primarily lifetime health insurance benefits that were paid to retirees that had been negotiated in bargaining unit contracts. In the late, late 1980s, 1990s in particular, the part of the 20th century, those numbers got pretty big. There were some places that had hundreds of millions of dollars of liability. And if you don't have something set up to earn, earn some, some money itself to help pay for that, all that would come out of operations in the future. So, but to establish a trust, so that's why the statutes were passed, to give, give a vehicle for entities to be able to handle all of those post-employment benefits, which primarily lifetime health benefits. In other words, we pay your, your insurance premium for the rest of your life. They had to be capped by July 1st of 2002. And then you could, and the trust could be funded then by the issuance of general obligation bonds. So, the other thing is the legislature allowed the choice of two types of trust. One is an irrevocable trust, and that locks in the funds for paying retiree benefits into perpetuity and, and only, only retiree benefits. A revocable trust allows more flexibility to use the funds if the investment of the funds does better than anticipated or produces more assets over the liability. In that case, there's some very strict criteria, but in that case, the board has, the school board has the ability to utilize excess assets for any, anything that they deem appropriate. So because of these three reasons, though, we knew, whoop, did I, I missed a slide? Yeah. We chose to establish a revocable trust because we knew excess assets were likely to accrue. When we were starting through this, I directed the actuaries to use a conservative 3% discount rate to calculate the initial liability because we wanted to make sure that we actually had enough. And we didn't want to be able to, we weren't, didn't want to have to worry that we would be short of funds even in an economic downturn. And also, at that time, 3% was what the district could earn on its own with what we were investing in cash, which actually, like, we were handling our cash that way now, we're getting 3%. So, very conservative in that regard, but, and, and we didn't know exactly how we were going to handle it. One of the options was for the district to just keep all of our assets in cash and make that 3%, but then they also allowed for us to, to work with financial professionals to very carefully manage the investments and possibly make a little bit more. But we knew also that with a fixed set of participants receiving benefits over time, there were 615, that over time, normal mortality would result in a liability decreasing significantly. But as I'll talk about a little bit later, it will never go away because there's something called an explicit liability for what you actually pay for, and then there's an implicit liability because retirees are actually eligible to stay on retirement or on health insurance for the district if they pay for their own premiums. So, but because of those three reasons, we knew that there was a chance of excess assets accruing over time. We established it in 2008 with a $17.7 million liability and 615 participants. We did a selection process and Wells Fargo, Fargo Private Wealth Management was selected as our, our investment manager. And so, by utilizing them, we're basically able to invest in all of the same investment vehicles that the TRA, well, the State Board of Investment does for the Teachers Retirement Association, for the Public Employees Retirement Association, for the State of Minnesota Retirement Association. So, from 2008 to 2025, actually, $10 million, 10.8, almost $10.9 million has been dispersed to the general fund to pay for retiree health benefit expenditures. The interesting thing about that is, you know, little things make, doing some of the little things make a big difference in terms of the financial health of, of the district in terms of having somewhat of a fund balance because if you, if you look at it, you know, we're always trying to balance the budget and we're trying to expend as much as we can on, on instructional operations. Well, you know, so we're trying to budget a surplus of less than a million dollars, just really tight, you know, and spend 99.9% of the dollars. Well, a couple of these things make a big difference because if we had not been able to transfer $10.8 million or $10.9 million from the OPEB fund to the general fund to pay for retiree benefits over that time period, our, our current fund balance, instead of being the projected actual, we were not closed officially yet, but then the estimated closing amount of 17.4 million would actually only be about 6.5 million. So, there's little things that we do that make a big difference in terms of, of, you know, the decisions that the school board has made to keep the district financially sound. So on, this is a little bit of a background, though, because at one, we did at one point in time have excess assets several years ago, and the board made the decision to invest that in a long-lived asset. So, it, back on June 30th of 2021, we, the assets had grown to $28 million and the liability had declined to 10.9, just under 11. And participants had, had declined from 615 in 2008 down to 2, down to 209. And so, the, this part of the subdivision statute there, I have it listed out, allowing the school board to determine, hey, there's excess assets, we might want to use them for, for another purpose. The school board approved the use of $7 million in excess assets to, to construct a strategic asset of the vantage momentum building. And then, in, in October of '21, and then on June 2nd, 2022, after bids came in higher than estimated due to construction inflation, calendar '22 was the year that actually inflation peaked across the country at 8%, but we needed another 2.85 million. So we put $9.85 million, pulled them out of the market, out of the investments, and put it into the completion of the vantage momentum building. And it actually turned out to be a pretty good move at the time, though, because right after that, the market actually dropped considerably by about 30%. So we actually, money that would have just disappeared with a, with a market drop, we basically were able to put into 100 million, or 100 million, 100-year asset. Now, here's the issue of what's called a revocable trust liability components. There's two components of the liability, explicit, as I mentioned, and then implicit, so implicit. So the explicit amounts are specifically contracted dollar amounts that were in effect for persons employed before July 1st, 2002. So, these are dollar amounts specified in the contract. You're going to get X amount per month for the rest of your life. And again, these, this portion of the benefits will eventually end due to mortality. And then there's an implicit amount, and that's related to the fact that under Minnesota statute, a person retiring from a school district can stay on, them and their dependent can stay on the school district's insurance plan, provided that they pay the premiums themselves. So, the thing is, is older persons are more expensive for health insurance cost purposes. You know, it's like, I'm more expensive than a brand-new teacher because I need a little more maintenance, a lot more maintenance. But, so the thing is, is Minnesota statutes require that premiums not be age-related. So I can't get charged more than a new teacher for the same coverage, right? So, so premiums for younger employees are technically higher then, than they would be if they were just assessed by your actuarial age. And the premiums of older employees are actually a little bit lower, or they're technically lower than they would be if it was, if we were just, you know, charged out by age. So, that's how you get the, the same level, same level premium. And, and, but that, that is what's called the implicit because the, the retirees are brought down and active employees are brought up. So that's the implicit subsidy of active employees going up. So, that's how the implicit liability is, is determined. And the, the thing about that is these benefits will never end due to mortality because the ability to stay on, on a district's health plan is, is in statute. And so, this is a, this is a little bit harder way to look at it, and I'm, I'm gonna try to point it, but this is actually the actual aerial table pulled right out of the CBIZ actuaries' calculation of our current accrued liability. And so, it's, it's a little bit hard to read, but on the left side, it says the plan year beginning July 1st, 2024, which is, so, at the beginning of the year, the total planned value was, or unfunded liability was $10,303,000, which is the number at the upper right. And you can see how that, that dwindles out over time. It goes out to 2023, and you can see how it, it's disappear, it gradually disappears. Now, but, and in fact, you'll see that most of that is actually going to be the implicit liability by 2053, but they project out that there will be people still hanging in there who are part of the explicit liability. So this is the explicit liability, and you can see right now, as of the plan year of, of July 1st, 2024, fiscal '25, so as of June 30th, $5.2 million of that 10.3 is the explicit liability. In other words, that's how much for the people we're paying cash out for the promises to pay their premiums every month. And you see how by 2053, it keeps going down, 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 it gets down to 469,000, and eventually, by probably about 2060, it actually will probably get to zero. Because there's going to be some octogenarians and septagenarians and hanging in there, you know? So that's a good thing, but, but it eventually dwindles down. So, there's not, and there's not a separate table that shows implicit, but you can get the implicit by just doing the math. So the implicit liability is at 5 million versus the 5.2, so it's about 49%. But eventually, because of mortality, the explicit will drop to zero and the implicit will go to, grow to 100%. But they're saying, okay, by, by 2053, which was the end of the, or the current estimate, the implicit liability of that 2 million, the implicit's going to be 1.6, and the explicit's 4.469,000. But the thing about that is, is, is that, that overall implicit liability, though, is still going to be considerably lower than it is now. Although, but it could go up if more people decide to stay on. And we're actually studying that a little bit because we have had a situation where we thought our liability was, our liability was going to be about, down to about $9 million, but it was calculated at 10.3 because there were 12 retirees and seven dependents that stayed on our health insurance plan rather than going to, most people go to Ucare. And, and also, they're on Medicare, right? So there's, there's Medicare, and we get, we get the Medicare benefit for people who are retired and still on our plan, there's, Medicare's calculated into it. So Medicare still does that, their part. But then we do anything above Medicare. But the thing is, is just those 19 people actually increased the estimated liability by about $1.2 million, up to 10.3. So, because they're relatively young, relative, you know, for, well, relatively young for retired people, and they're going to be hanging in there for a while. So that's, that's kind of the way it works. But eventually, that liability does decline over time, and so if we just keep doing, well, the, the charts I'm gonna show you next are just some, some history and then what it might look like, assuming we just would earn our steady 3% conservatively, and if we do better than that, we'll do better than that. But the, the, you're gonna see that we need the level of, of assets we have now to fund the annual withdrawal. So this is a history from fiscal year 10. We, we started, we sold the bonds in the fiscal year 2009, but we really just held tight and didn't do much with them and until the financial meltdown kind of basically just, you know, got a little bit more settled. And so then we started slowly investing them. And so you can see that we've had years where we haven't, where we actually lost assets in terms of the investment return, but most years, we're actually making reasonable investment returns. And so for fiscal '25, we made 1.3 million. Fiscal '21, that was the year when, when the stock market was just, you know, doing very well, and we didn't do anything different than we did the year before, but we made $4,750,000 in that year, and that's the year the assets got up to 28 million. So, our annual average return has been 5.9%. If you take all that, all the ups and downs, and we've made 5.9% on average. And so, that's the way that, that's what that looks like. Here's our withdrawals from the beginning, our annual withdrawals, and that's been calculated by, we just take what the actuarial number is and withdraw that every year. And again, you can see through FY '25, again, I mentioned 10.9 million withdrawn. Our general operating fund balance is 17.4. So again, a, a good point, part of that could be attributed to the fact that, hey, we didn't have to pay these retiree health benefits out of funds that we could use for classroom instruction or anything else, or it's like, or that might be in the difference between us having a surplus in a given year versus not. And so, you know, that really, those benefit withdrawals kind of, you could say they make up about roughly 2/3 of the current general oper, unassigned fund balance. And then on this one, I have FY '26 is estimated at $895,000 withdrawal. So this is kind of a busy thing, but it, it shows our, our liability is in blue. The assets, and those come right off the charts that CBIZ handles or puts together for us. Our assets are, and this is historical, our assets are in orange, and then the excess assets are the blue and, basically, blue and orange turns into green. The, although, what happens is in calculating excess assets, not only do I just do what the current assets and the current liability is, I also include as part of the liability the ability to, or the need to make that next withdrawal because it's within 12 months, and so that's a current liability. So, I count, I, I don't, I count that as part of not, as part of the liability as opposed to not being part of the excess assets at any given date. That's a little more conservative way to approach it. And so you can see after FY '21, that's when we pulled out the 9.85 million for the, the vantage building. And I'm just, I'm just gonna go, actually, I'm gonna go back. Because, so, yeah, when we, when we got up to, out to here, we pulled money out before all this bad stuff happened, right there. So it was, it was a fortuitous move on our part in that regard. So this is just what the liability looks like, you know, going, calculating from where it is. You can see the jump from 9.3 up to 10.3. And so, there's where I mentioned the 12 retirees and seven dependents. So, CBIZ said it's a third year that they noticed that condition. So we've contracted CBIZ to do a comprehensive valuation study, which is actually a little deeper study than just calculating, you know, just kind of rolling everything over and updating the numbers. So they're, they're gonna put that in process for us. But this is the way that you see the total liability going down, and I have it going down through 2039. It's small enough to fit on the chart, but also, 2039 just happens to be 30 years after we issued the bonds, and that's when the last bonds are paid off. So, now, the bonds are paid off actually by a levy that taxpayers used to pay the bonds off, but still, it's, it just kind of showed that, that we're still going to have a liability when the bonds are paid off, but we're also going to have assets when the bonds are paid off. So, these are annual projected future benefit withdrawals. So from, for fiscal '26, which is what we're in right now through fiscal '39, we're currently projected to pull out another $9 million out of there. That would be $9 million that if we didn't have this fund, would have to basically come out of the general fund, it wouldn't be available for instructional operations. And then this is projected future investment earnings being very, very conservative, but so these next slides, I just do, assuming the three, that we're just going for our 3%. We invested, you know, reasonably conservative. And so, you know, we had a decent year in FY '25, but we've had years where we've been less than that. So if we just hand, hang in at 3%, you see the, see it drops a little bit because the, the payments coming out are, are higher than the earnings at 3%. And then our projected future asset balance at 3% annual returns, we actually are, still end up at fiscal '39 with still about 11.6 million in, in assets. We're slowly drawing it down, though, if we just make 3% returns. But the thing is, is our excess assets actually go up because the liability key is dropping actually more than we're withdrawing the excess assets. So here, we're showing how the, the excess assets would grow from the current level of about 3.6 million up to about 5.9 million. So that puts all those three prior charts together. You can see the, the assets slowly going down, but the liability going down faster, which means the excess assets rise. But it doesn't, you know, that's not a lot of money. It doesn't take a few million dollars one way or the other to actually really tip that. And if, you know, if we say, hey, let's pull, you know, $5 million out of the assets right now to take it down exactly to 100% of the liability, all of a sudden, you're basically turning this fund into a sinking fund. But it has to continue on because of the implicit liability, it has to continue on after fiscal year '39. So, again, our net results after 17 years, 17.7 million invested. If you take everything that we've withdrawn, we've actually pulled out 20.7 million of what I'm calling dividends, the benefit withdrawal dividends and the investment in our 100-year asset, and we have 14.7 million remaining. The net result after 14 years, if we make our 3% annual returns, we'll have about 5.5 million in investment earnings. We'll actually pull out about 9 million of dividends to cover the, the, the benefits that have been paid out. And then we'll have 11.7 million in assets remaining, and about, of that amount, about 5.9 million would be excess assets at that time. So, that's just a summary of, of kind of where we're at, and it's, we're just kind of steady as she goes and just trying to be conservative. And, you know, if, hey, the stock market goes nuts and goes up to 70,000, maybe there'll be another opportunity there, you know? But we're not counting on that, we're counting on making sure that we can cover the benefits. But the school board has the option. If, if we're the, the benefactors of good fortune in that regard, there might be an opportunity at some point in time. I can't say there will ever will be, but there might be, you know? So, anyway, but the, the fund is doing what it's supposed to do, and it's where it's supposed to be. The, the assets are producing enough revenue to basically cover the remain, remainder of that liability.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. Any questions or comments from the board? I know we had some feet, that's next, okay. I know we have some board members not attending, but we have some feedback on the next item.
How, how exactly is the implicit liability calculated? Is that, is that just a matter of art by the actuaries?
It's all actuaries.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's all, it, there's, I can't do it.
And, but if, if I'm understanding this correctly, explicit liabilities were the retirees who were eligible for this fund when the fund was established, correct?
They were people who were eligible under the contracts where the benefits were capped. So let's say I was a brand-new teacher on, in January of 2002, because they had to be capped by July 1st of 2002. I have rights to that old contract for the rest of my career, so let's say I was 22, and it's two, and it's 20, and I'm gonna work till 2042.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'm gonna retire, and I'm gonna be around till hopefully 2062, right? I mean, I might be 82 or 90. So there are some people that are still in the system, and they have the rights for whatever dollar amount that is. And for teachers, it happens to be $210. But...
And that's the, that's the explicit liability, right? And then the implicit is any of our staff can elect, and, and then we have to kick in. So it stands to reason that as our district has grown, because our district has grown a lot since this fund was established, and presumably...
Yes.
...our staff has grown a lot since the fund was, has established, the implicit liability has also ballooned over time because there are more people who are eligible for that benefit.
Well, they only, they only have been doing it, they have only looked at actual projections of people staying in. So the implicit liability is based on kind of the historical use...
Correct.
...as opposed to people going to Ucare. So my understanding is what the, the way the actuaries are going to work on looking at that comprehensively is they're going to try to look at that and they're gonna go, okay. Because it's still not a majority of people that are staying on our plan.
Right.
It's just more than had been. The vast majority of our people basically go to Ucare.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think around like how prudent we need to be with this fund because looking at it through the, the vantage momentum lens, you know, we withdrew $7 million, and then there were cost overruns that necessitated another disbursement of 2.85. And we've got an $85 million bond measure we're putting in front of the community for a bunch of construction this fall. But it sounds like it wouldn't be prudent to make any withdrawals from this fund to cover anything on that front, right?
No. That, because the thing is, is, well, you can't, the, the quote-unquote "cost overruns" where it was a bid, the bids came in higher...
Okay, okay.
...because of inflation. It wasn't, once the bid was in, we did not run over costs.
Right.
But the bid estimate was higher because everything was going crazy at that time.
Yeah, I just, I just trying to wrap my head around how prudent we need to be given what's on the, on, you know, in the near term, so.
Right.
That makes sense.
But, but from a construction standpoint, we shouldn't have to pull money out of this fund to, to do any of those other projects. And the discussion has always been with the board even before, I think, remember Vitaly, you're the, you're the great back of the Gorilla Clan or whatever, kind of, right? So you've been around the longest, but even, even before that, the, the discussion was always, if we're going to pull money out of there, it has to be for something that's gonna benefit the district for a long time, it has to be really meaningful, it's like we're not gonna, they weren't gonna pull money out to like, oh, we're gonna balance the budget for one year and kind of fritter it away. That's never been, you know, that's always been the discussion of really, and, and the reality of it is, is the fact that, you know, the stock market jumped, gosh, you know, about 10,000 or 12,000 points like in a very short period of time, and that's why everybody's assets were way up. And, and so it actually, the people who are also on our, our OPEB committee, our investment people that work for, we have, one of them, John Groton, is investment manager for Thriving. But it was, you know, they, they looked at it, said, yeah, well, it's a good time probably to take some money off the table, whether we use it for the OPEB fund or not, but it's like, let's pull money out of the market and, and reduce our risk. And we did, and it turned out we got 100-year asset for it that we otherwise wouldn't have, and we didn't have to charge the taxpayers for it. So that, that's the calculation that went into making that decision to pull that money out, out at that time.
Right. Thank you.
Mike?
Paul, you said the, one of the, one of the reasons why we had the little sort of miscalculation recently was because there weren't as many people who were on that implicit bi, implicit pathway that didn't go to Ucare like was anticipated, like most people do. Do we know why that was? Is that, are we, and, and are we anticipating that that is gonna stay consistent in the future, that there will be, there will continue to be people going to Ucare and not staying on our insurance plan? Or was that like a matter of, like, for, for those people, they felt it was more convenient for them to stay on rather than have to switch around and change things up?
Well, one of the things is, we have retirees on this plan who live all across the country. We also have active dependents who are, because you can be a dependent till age 26, right? So we have dependents all across the country. So I work real hard to make sure that there's really, a really good network for our self-insurance plan for everybody across the country. But if you retire, let's say to Arizona or Florida or, I don't know, Montana, you can stay on our plan. I don't know if there's more people doing that or not, but because to be on Ucare, you have to be a resident in the state and maintain that residency. But the vast majority of people are still doing that, are still going there, it's just that not quite as many. So that, that may mean that people are moving out of state a little bit more. So, like, like, as I mentioned, the actuaries have said that they saw this trend for three years, and this, this last year was just a bigger one, but, but a bigger, bigger year doesn't make, mean it's gonna stay that level. So that's why they're gonna study it, and that's why we pay, that's why we pay them and not me to do that.
So it's still yet to be determined whether or not this is gonna be a growing trend?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, it, you know, most people retire, they tend to stay around their families, you know, but you just, if I knew, I would probably be... but you just, if I knew, I would probably be, you know, I'd be a really wealthy guy if I had figured out how to do that. But no.
Well, based on the previous slide, I mean, it looks like your, if I'm reading the the slide correctly, the amount that has that was originally invested, if you add the cumulative benefits and our remaining amount, then you actually, we've doubled
Oh, right here?
the initial investment.
Yes. Yeah, we basically doubled the investment because we've actually pulled more out between the benefit withdrawals and then the one-time excess assets in it for VanMell. We've actually, you know, that's, you know, we've been able to do that. So, yeah, and there's still $14 million of assets remaining.
So you may not be able to predict all the future, but it looks like this was a pretty good prediction, that this was a good investment to make back in 2008, so.
Yeah, and yeah, so so we are, yeah, and we're solid. We should be able to, you know, even at 3%, we should be able to fund the actuary's current calculation of benefits. If we keep hitting our 5.9, you know, the historical, that might be some excess benefits. So if the implicit does keep rising, we should be able to cover it. But I don't really want to, we know we can make 3% in the worst case by just putting money into the things that we can invest in, you know, super, super conservatively. But we've been doing about 5.9 with a very conservative portfolio compared to, not same as being all in cash, right? But it's in about a solid position as you can as you can get it. So, you know, people will be able to, if we if we just kind of stay the course, I think, just be conservative, and we, if there's an opportunity for some future use besides besides utilizing it for benefits, you never know. But when that would be, you never know. But the main thing is, is making the main thing the main thing is that this fund is set up to fund the benefits that are going to be accruing over the next 30 or 40 years, so it won't be coming out of the general fund.
Thank you, and thank for all the questions. And I know you talked a little bit about this, but can you talk a little bit? We have a committee that that is meeting and looking at this fund. Board member Olson sits on that. I think it meets quarterly, twice a year. Did you already, did you already go through that? I'm sorry.
No, no.
But just want to shout out to the OPEB committee. I know you talked about Mr. Groton, and I don't know all the other names from that standpoint. But just from the community standpoint, that this is a board committee, typically the treasurer sits on that, so it's something that we look at four times per year, look at investment results, and keep all of that going. So I just wanted to make that mention.
And then two more members, a shout out to Dan Segerson is a investment advisor for Focus Financial. And then Pat Schmidt is a certified public accountant, and he's retired now, but he had Schmidt CPAs. And he's retired, but the both Dan and Pat have actually been on the committee since its inception.
Great. And a shout out to you for recognizing this and jumping on it all those years ago, something that we can see in, Board Member Remacall talked about a great investment, and we've, past boards have been able to use that for a great investment. So thank you, appreciate it. Next up is discussion on changes to open meeting law. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you're aware, prior to this board meeting, I shared an update to the Minnesota statute 13D.02 specifically related to remote participation for for government bodies, or specifically, in our case, school boards to board meetings. It's timely tonight because we would have had a quorum, but board members have other jobs. Some of our board members sit on other boards that meet on the same night. Sometimes there are medical emergencies, sometimes there are family emergencies. This statute changed what was currently allowed prior to this legislative session, which was if a board member wasn't going to attend a board meeting, they had to be in a public place that was noted with opportunities for other members of the public to join that public or that board member at that location. Through the pandemic and remote meetings, flexibility was encouraged, and the legislation passed, or legislature passed this change. And I'll read through the pertinent members or pertinent items for members of the public. A meeting governed by this section and or by 13D.01 may be conducted by interactive technology so long as all members of the body participating in the meeting, whether physically in the boardroom, wherever or any other place, can hear and see one another and can hear and see all discussion and testimony presented at any location in which at least one board member is present. So if only one board member was here, all other board members would need to be seen and see each other and would all have to see the presentations happening at the boardroom. Members of the public present at the regular meeting location of the body can hear and see all discussion and testimony and all votes of the members of the body. So people in this room would be able to have to see everyone, hear of them and their votes. At least one member would have to be in this room. All votes have to be conducted by roll call so that each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. And each location at which a member of the body is present in is open. So this room would have to be open to the public. So that, those are the big changes away from being everyone would have to be in a public location to these changes. Rather than just make a discussion or a decision about this, this board has decided to have a public discussion about it. And tonight's a timely discussion. So I had sent this information to board members in advance, and I want to share some feedback from Board Member Leo Halloran and from Board Member Selinger, who weren't able to attend tonight. Board Member Leo Halloran shared, we should, if we take advantage of this, we should notice, make a notice to our public using the statute or language so that the public members are not surprised when they come and notice that someone is remote. That was the recommendation. More importantly, or as importantly, make sure our technology is set up so that wherever someone is at, there's high-speed internet, that everyone can be seen and heard, everyone can see and hear all participants, and board members who are participating remotely would not be interrupted during the meeting. Board Member Leo Halloran said, I value the in-person engagement of the board. We don't need to be shy about using remote options when necessary or useful to allow more full participation. An issue that, when board issues arise, that would be where we value all board member discussion. So he shared that, he, what he, the statute does not cover remote participation by members of the public. He acknowledges that, that it's not allowable under the statute. That could be a different discussion. So that was Board Member Leo Halloran. Board Member Selinger shared, it's important to be explicit with our community about this option, however that would be, whether it be by policy or notice. I don't think we should be using it frequently. It would be nice to have as an option in unique situations. Make sure the technology is is available to display members of the board and presenters. She's also curious how other board members or other school districts are using this policy. So both of these, I would summarize as having an openness to this policy, making sure our technology is fully accessible, and making sure we're fully transparent with members of the community that this is an option, should it need to be used. And I would say, certainly, we're not making a decision tonight. I would say both of them think it would be valuable if there's important issues that the board is discussing, and a roll call vote would be beneficial to the public. With that, I open up to board members in the room.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Law, and thank you for gathering board member feedback. Any questions, comments, discussion from board members, or I can go? If you guys are thinking, yeah. Just a couple of things. It's very similar to what we had to do during COVID. I mean, it was very similar. So we had, typically, the chair was here with members of the administration in this room, and then we were all remote from that standpoint. And so we couldn't be in public places and all of those things, so out of necessity. So it feels this policy a lot like that. So and as I think about this, I'm definitely open to it. I like Member Selinger's comments that, you know, personally, I think it should, as well, should be used in very special cases and communicated appropriately as as much as we can. But we've had lots of interesting meetings or that that have come up out of necessity where we have emergency meetings or doing other things, or we really need to make a decision or do different things. And there's probably going to be things like that. And if we need to get to a quorum or other things, I think we need, we should have the flexibility and have a policy like this so that we're prepared for that just in case. And thinking about the technology pieces, thinking although from that standpoint. And then I go to the other side where I wouldn't want, and and I don't know that we get to control this, again, I value the in-person nature of this. I, you know, board meetings are in public for the public so that they can see us and see us interacting, and I understand you can do that in technology. So I wouldn't want it personally to be the norm. You know, if board members have to miss, that's, that's, I think that's fine, and that's part of the the deal. So I don't know that I want to lean on this just to get everybody into a meeting from that standpoint. But if you have emergency things, there's probably controversial topics or things that are very, maybe not controversial, just very important to the public that they want to hear from all board members. I think there's various reasons to be supportive of this and investigate it more. So that's kind of my long, drawn-out thoughts. Dan?
I pretty much concur with everything you said, like, except, it being the exception rather than the rule seems like a good approach, but it it seems very prudent to have a plan for how we would implement that if the use case arose, you know? I think a couple, a couple factors I have to consider are, you know, is it, you know, like you said, important ones where it would be for the public's benefit to bring people in remotely. We should absolutely consider it if there's someone that can't be there. If that, like, in addition to all the factors you listed, if the board member is, they're on a work trip or something like that, but they really want to participate remotely, I think we should honor that. And then I don't know if it's something we need to do in study sessions or not. We might differentiate between the type of meeting that we're having as to whether we want to implement that or or bring that to the table or not.
I think a couple, my couple thoughts on it is, number one, when I first saw this, my first question was, do we need a policy? And it seems like as far as state statute is concerned, we don't need a policy per se. The Minnesota School Board Association does not have a model policy, at least at this point, related to it. Obviously, this just kind of came around, so I wouldn't be surprised if they're working on it. But they also can crank those out pretty quickly when they, when there's need for it. So I think if we were to have a policy for it, it would probably be more along around the idea of sort of code of conduct concepts rather than specific requirements that reflect the way the statute works. Outside that, I think, I think I agree with everything that's been said so far in the comments. I think this is something that I would like to think that at least the current board would not be leaning on that, like abusing that, in other words, in order to to not have to be present in the room. I think we're all very interested and invested in in coming and being present whenever we possibly can. The other, the other question we might want to address more of as a culture sort of issue around this subject is, when people are absent, do we make sure they know that unless there is something driving them to attend online, then their absence is called an excused absence? They don't need to go out of their way to be present on an online basis unless it's, again, something that they they want to participate?
Great feedback, yeah. And maybe there's a question for everyone here is, what are the drawbacks or unintended consequences? I know we talked about leaning on it, or I don't, I don't know that you could say boards would abuse it. I don't know that there's abuse of having board members in a meeting, but, I mean, of course, if we value the in-person, you could see it that way, I guess. I don't know, is there other unintended consequences or things we're not thinking about with this?
So as I've been thinking about this in the board discussion, certainly, you know, the likeliest thing to happen is some very unexpected thing happens between now and September 4th, our first board meeting. And we don't have an established protocol or policy in place, and we need to use this to get to quorum, something crazy like that. It's allowable by statute, it can happen. So in the in the short term. But in the absence of that, I think we could come back at a September work session with a, you know, one of the things that our policy does, and we can look at existing policy or standalone policy that acknowledges as a, as this is a practice, but it starts with a belief station like, statement like many of our policies do, that would say, it's the belief of the Minnetoka School Board that in-person engagement is a priority for all board members. And it's understandable that some board members have to miss for other reasons and are unable to attend in person or remotely. But in the event that there are opportunities for board members to participate remotely, and yet they're unable to physically be in the room, topics of importance in the community or otherwise, you know, we could draft that belief statement, this board exception will follow the, this statute. We can draft something up. I know General Counsel Angie Flowers enjoys a good challenge, and so we can talk about where that might be fitting in policy and bring that back for another discussion with the understanding that this is, I mean, it's the law today, so it's allowable, but we will try to capture that. And I think that captures what these board members said about, let's be transparent about what our aspirations are and what, when, when we might use this, if that makes sense.
Hold on, all right. What, one thing I think I heard you say is, an unintended consequence might be the community's view of this and what the board thinks about it. And so addressing that in a, in a policy or a statement or something, you know, would help. We're always striving to be transparent and public trust, and it has been a goal for the last couple of years. So I think that is a, is a good take. I'm sorry, Mike?
I think the only other thing we need to consider is, some of the stipulations in the statute talk specifically about the the technical aspect. And so we would probably need to make sure that our fantastic technical director in the booth is, is able to provide what is set forth in that statute so that we can make sure that we aren't providing, we're producing something that isn't acceptable.
We will be working on that right now.
And the budgetary ramifications, if any.
Thank you, of course.
Great. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, board members, and anybody listening online and everybody in the audience. We are done. Thank you.